I think we're ready to go. Apologies are in order if the sound system sounds a bit like a bad Star Wars movie. We're getting used to the new sound system. Is it better? Better, better, better? Welcome to the Twilight Zone. For this Monday, June 18, 2018, a Lakewood City Council meeting, and we call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Barth, Councilmember Bokey, Councilmember Branstadter, Councilmember Moss, Councilmember Simpson, Deputy Mayor Whelan, and Mayor Anderson, excused, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Now, if you would, please stand and join me in our pledge of allegiance to the flag preceded by a moment of silence for our men and women serving overseas and here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you very much. We now turn to our proclamations and presentations portion of tonight's agenda, and first up we have the Tacoma Pierce County Habitat for Humanity presentation, and for that we have Maureen Fife, the CEO.
Thank you so much. Well, June is homeownership month, so it is very appropriate for us to be presenting this plaque to you at this point. Rosabeth Kanter once said, "A vision is not just a picture of what could be. Is it an appeal to our better selves, a call to be something more?" And you, the council, had a vision of something more for Tillicum. You have demonstrated a commitment to that vision, one of community renewal and new affordable housing. Tillicum, once a vulnerable community plagued by gangs and crime and poverty, is now a community where other businesses and builders are investing. It's on the way up. You have excelled in leveraging your federal and state dollars to the highest outcome. You have removed blighted structures and partnered with us to build new, energy-efficient, affordable homes. Your commitment to the vision of something more for Tillicum has attracted new homeowners who are committed to a thriving Tillicum. They are engaged residents, ready to make a difference. Now, you probably already know this, but your city staff is exemplary. They are accessible, they are collaborative, and they are creative. And I just want to mention in particular Jeff Gumm, Dave Buhr, and City Manager John Caulfield. They are all people that you can be proud of, and they represent Lakewood very well. Our partnership together started back in 2007 with one home on U Lane, and in the next year we built two more in Lake City. But in Tillicum, we have completed four home repairs, one rehab, and 26 new homes built with five more under construction and two more in the permitting phase. That's over 40 housing solutions, and your commitment has made that possible. We're grateful for your leadership, your partnership, and your support, and it's my honor today to present this Excellence in Housing Award to the City of Lakewood. Thank you for your leadership. If we could get a picture, that would be great.
Of course, thank you. After first clap. Well, it's always fun to celebrate accomplishments, successes, new beginnings, and longevity. And the next portion of our program is to celebrate a little bit of all of that. We welcome the FJ Winard and Associates folks to come to the podium, and I think we've got Sean Mattingly, who's gonna come on up and share this with Jim, and we'll present our business showcase of the month to FJ Winard and Associates. Winand, Winand. I didn't have my glasses on. I can't see anything here.
I didn't bring my glasses.
I know. Get to hold it.
Thanks.
So, as it says in the description here, we do this to celebrate our businesses in town, especially the ones who do our taxes, and those who struggle with my taxes know I always get an extension. So whether it's an individual looking for help on a personal tax return during tax season, or a small business owner who needs help with their financial portfolio, F. James Winard and Associates CPAs tailors its services and delivers a personal touch with every interaction. Winand. I gotta get rid of the R. Exactly. Building strong relationships with clients is the backbone of the business. The firm's history in Lakewood goes back over 50 years. That's when founder Marion Argo opened the firm. She sold the business in 1985 to Aberdeen-based Iken &amp; Sanders, and it again sold in 1994 to Jim Winand, who previously managed the firm under Iken &amp; Sanders. Despite the name changes and my challenge with the R in the name, the company has remained at its present location at 6322 Lake Grove Street Southwest since 1982. It is because of its longevity in Lakewood, its commitment to developing personal relationships, and its support of the community that the Lakewood City Council recognizes F. James Winand and Associates CPAs as its June 2018 business showcase.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for all you do, all your work with the chamber here in town.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll give you guys a chance to say a few words about...
Oh.
Yeah.
We get to say something?
Mark's gotta get a photo.
Holy cow.
Yeah, come on up, you guys.
Okay, get a picture, hubby.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And we'll get a picture down below, but say a few words first, and then we'll come on down for a third time.
Okay. Well, I didn't think that was a thing, but that's okay. Thank you so much. Win and Associates CPAs. I'm actually really happy we're in Lakewood. I've been in the community out and about. As some of you know, I've seen many of you at chamber events and things, and it's a great place to live, work, and play, as we like to say, and it really is. It's good to see, like, the presentation before. This is a great place to be and continues to be. I'm always impressed with the new stuff that's going on, and I'm happy to be here, and we're happy to continue to support the business community and the individuals here, and hope we get to do that for a really long time. As president and CEO, yep, he gave that up to me. I'm happy to be here. I don't see us going anywhere for a very long time, and we appreciate your kind words and for showcasing us this month. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I know, I know. I can't. I didn't have my glasses on. Bad guy. Okay, number three on our proclamation presentation agenda is an I-5 JBLM corridor improvement project update, and for this we have Mr. Chuck Mead, construction project engineer. Take it away.
All right. Well, thank you, council, for inviting us to come and present tonight on the JBLM project. Again, my name is Chuck Mead, and I'm the project engineer for the Lacey Project Engineering Office for Washington Department of Transportation. I've brought with me a couple colleagues that are gonna share in some of the presentation and share with some of the Q and A. So with me, I've got Kirk Wilcox, and he's the design manager for the corridor, really, and then Kara Mitchell, who is our communications manager. Also with me is Troy Watts, and he's our design-build-site manager. So, wanted to go over a couple things really fast as far as what I want to talk about tonight. I want to talk about just an overview of the project and orate the project goal. I also want to talk about the timing of the project, the different interchange designs that we have, the impacts that the community is gonna see with the project, and also some communication protocol that we have for the project. Okay. So, the project is essentially, it's a corridor project broken out into four different stages throughout the JBLM corridor, and you can see it here on the screen. The project that I'm gonna be speaking about tonight is stage two of this corridor program. It's highlighted in red up there. I don't know if you can distinguish that very well, but stage two, Tillicum Dupont Road to Thorn Lane, and the scope of that project is we're gonna be widening I-5 from mileposts essentially 120 through 125. We're also going to be rebuilding interchanges for Berkeley and Thorn. Let's see. I want to read the project goal. So, the purpose and need for the project is to relieve chronic traffic congestion and improve person and freight mobility along I-5 in the vicinity of JBLM while maintaining access to communities and military installations neighboring the highway. So I want to keep that in mind as I go through the presentation. The overall, and I'll just briefly summarize it, the overall goal for the project is to relieve congestion on I-5. So, moving on. Timing. So kind of a little bit of a schedule of the project. As you can see, the first bullet here, the project was awarded, and we actually executed the project with our contractor last week, Atkinson Construction. So, they won the contract through a competitive bidding process. So, we're gonna begin the design, their design of their specific concept here this week, actually. So, we really anticipate construction beginning in the fall of 2018, September, October timeframe. Up until then, however, you're gonna see some activity onsite. You're gonna see some geotechnical investigations so that we can further our geotechnical engineering. You're also gonna see maybe some survey work out there and some other utility relocations as there are a lot of utilities out there. We're doing a lot of work, so there's actually a really big upfront push to get some of those utilities relocated, minimizing the overall duration of the project. So, construction for our contractor should begin in fall 2018. Two years later, fall of 2020, we should be in our final configuration, which means that all of the traffic is gonna be where traffic is gonna live for the rest of its life. It's gonna be in its final configuration. All of the movements, all of the widening on I-5, the interchanges are gonna be complete. However, we'll still have some additional HMA to be paving as far as our final overlay, our final striping, some landscaping, but essentially 2020, the project should be in its final configuration as far as geometry. So, all functionality of the project will be in fall 2020. Like I had said, summer 2021, we should be finished with all of the landscaping, additional work that needs to take place after that. Now, I wanted to talk a little bit about just the concept in general. So as you can see here, we have Berkeley interchange and Thorn interchange. I-5 runs horizontal through the screen. I-5 heading north is gonna be to the right, south to the left. So, Atkinson proposed a change to the interchange concepts through the design process or procurement process, as we call it, for the job, and so they changed kind of the design from a dog bone, large structure interchange configuration to a more streamlined structure concept. And what's important there is, is we took this design and we vetted it. We looked at it with all of our different stakeholders, City of Lakewood, JBLM, FHWA. We addressed it internally, and really, their concept that they proposed really benefits the overall project goal, and it really has large benefits to congestion relief on I-5. One of those main, one of the, I guess, design concepts that brings along that benefit is, and I don't know, council, apologize, if you can see my pointer, I'm sure that you can't, but if you can see the text, it says that there's a combined exit ramp on, to the north of the project, there's a combined exit ramp. What that means is the off-ramp for Berkeley interchange and Thorn interchange for the southbound direction will be the Thorn off-ramp. And so to get to Berkeley, you take the Thorn off-ramp, and you have a fly-through. You don't have to stop at a light. You have a fly-through underneath the structure down to Berkeley. Part of the reason that we do that, we, the contractor has proposed that, is because in order to maintain grade separation with sound transit, we have to get 30 feet of vertical clearance. It's very hard for us to do that with a double bridge schematic here and to really build up to 30 vertical feet that close to sound transit. So, the concept is, I'll get a little bit more into the Thorn concept on the next slide, but the takeaway from this slide is that there's a single off-ramp to get to both Thorn and Berkeley on the southbound direction. There will be a single on-ramp for both Thorn and Berkeley for southbound, essentially where the southbound Berkeley on-ramp is right now. And I can go a little bit more into that in the next slides. This next slide is a depiction of the Thorn concept, and I do want to take a second to apologize. These schematics are kind of a little bit crude. I would have liked to bring something a little bit more tailored and very concise, but we're just in the initial design phase with our contractor, and so this is what we have right now, is just a concept plan. The takeaway that I wanted to show you here is, southbound I-5, to get to Tillicum, you're gonna take the Thorn off-ramp, and you're gonna have to cross I-5 twice. You're gonna be raising profile here, and you're gonna take a, what is that? That's a left? Go across the freeway, and then take two rights through the roundabouts, and you'll be in Tillicum down to Thorn. So it's a little bit circuitous, but once you get through this signal here, you have a dedicated right on the roundabout and then another right on this roundabout. So it's quite efficient, once you get the hang of it, and it'll be signed accordingly. I know, looking at it, it took me a while to understand it. It's not very intuitive on paper, but it, we will go through all of our different traffic engineering that we have to, to provide the adequate advanced signing so that everybody knows how to use this interchange. And again, to get to Berkeley, you exit at Thorn and take this fly-through all the way down to Berkeley. Again, you don't have to stop. You pass directly through down to Berkeley.
Sir, if we could, Mr. Branstadter?
Absolutely. I may back up.
There will now be two bridges crossing over I-5.
That's correct, yeah.
Are they both new, or is one the existing bridge?
They both will be new bridges.
So, the previous concept that was discussed with the neighborhood, that an existing bridge and an existing interchange in and out of Tillicum during construction would continue to exist while the new single bridge at that time was constructed, constructing all of this, is this gonna result in a period of time of when Berkeley is the only, in and out of Tillicum?
No. We plan to maintain access to both Thorn and Berkeley and have them in, with their full utilization through the project.
Okay. And when I look at this rendering of the connector road, do I not see that on here? The Gravelly Lake Thorn Connector Road. Am I, is it, it's just not on this rendering?
Correct. Yeah, the Gravelly Thorn Connector, of course, will come in a later stage, and it will tie in.
All right.
Thank you. Mr. Mead, this design, this combined ramp design, is it, has it been built somewhere close that if we wanted to see it, we could drive to see an example of this?
That's a great question. I, not that I'm aware of. Kirk, are you aware of any high-low bridge concepts like this in the near area?
The closest would be in barely a Chehalis area. Some similar design was built just in the last few years. Not exactly like this. This is a pretty unique solution.
So we're guinea pigs.
Well, I think just one thing also, partly to answer the question about open during construction, this is actually easier to build than other alternatives. So we were planning on having three to four-month closures of the southbound on-ramps of each interchange. The design builder was able to come up with a way to not have those long-term closures. Actually, better during construction than the... I think it will, it's very functional.
Thank you.
And I do want to add that as we work through the design with our design builder, we will be getting much better graphics and much better communication media that we're gonna be able to share with the council and with the communities, that it's gonna make it much easier to understand this concept because I, it's hard to, it's hard for me to bring this diagram today because it's just very difficult to describe, but it's what we have right now. So I wanted to bring it so that we could speak to it.
So, my question has to do with Murray Road and that, at least one roundabout there coming off Murray Road. In the Woodbrook area, we have a hopefully growing industrial area in there, which means big trucks.
Okay.
So, roundabouts sometimes have a bad relationship with big trucks.
Okay.
How would we, what's the width of the road there, and how do we make sure that the trucks aren't gonna have a problem there?
Well, thank you. That's a good question. I would say that roundabouts in general get a bad rap with large vehicles.
Okay.
However, we can design roundabouts to accommodate those large vehicles, and it's called a WB67 is the design vehicle, and it's your typical tractor-trailer that you see, and we have designed every intersection in this interchange to accommodate that large industrial vehicle.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. If I understood you correctly, Mr. Mead, this is all driven, this design is driven by the fact that you need grade separation with regard to the Yamtrack, track, correct?
That's a large variable, yes.
How large a variable? How large a variable?
Really, I'd ask for Kirk to speak to that, as I wasn't involved in the design and Kirk's the design manager.
Okay, let me help you out here. It's, it's not, the question is the lead-up to my follow-up question. If memory serves me correctly, this is the second plan we've seen. And you had mentioned the elimination of, which I think you referred to as the dog bone. What's your plan B? Because counter-intuitively, if I understood your presentation, your southbound works beautifully. That fly-through is great. This other part is not intuitive at all. And it's, maybe it's just my obtuseness here speaking, but seems to me obtuseness might not be such a good way, but the dog bone was. You see what I'm saying? I thought your first plan was a little better as far as northbound traffic.
I do see what you're saying, Mr. Simpson. And when the design builder brought this to us, this concept, and we evaluated it with, with FHWA, in-house, WashDOT.
Okay.
What we, what we had seen, and when we ran the modeling, is that this concept actually works better for our project goal and, and is better for congestion relief on I-5 than the original basic concept.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Is there a cost differential between the original plan, which frankly looked mammoth from the modeling that we saw and the elevation drawings that we received?
Yes, there is. There is a cost differential. And that is to the tune of around $40 million was the difference between Atkinson's bid and then the second lowest bidder, who obviously didn't have the same design.
So I guess maybe you're answering the question, is this plan $40 million less than the prior plan that we reviewed? Because that's my question, than the bid. So was the, was the bid let based upon the prior plans or was it on a different basis?
To speak to your first question, I believe if, if you're saying that the, the concept that you reviewed was the large structure with the two roundabouts, kind of what we call the dog bone interchanges, then yes. This, this proposal is a $40 million savings from the second bidder who had, who was essentially bidding the dog bone interchange style. And then, I'm sorry, I, I'm losing the second question?
You got it. You got it.
Okay.
We're not doggone a bone, so to speak, so go ahead.
Any more questions on the Thorn interchange? Let me go to Berkeley real fast. So Berkeley interchange, it, the, the concept design did get changed to what we call a tight diamond interchange. And this is a very common interchange along the I-5 corridor. It's essentially two signals at the end of the ramps up on, up on the connection road. And big benefit has the grade separation from sound transit. And it really, it eliminates two of the existing signals that you see today. So these two signals will be timed together. They will coordinate together well and really well into the future as far as the design year is concerned. We anticipate and model that it'll take one traffic cycle, one light cycle, excuse me, to get through this, the, the signal system. One of the unique aspects of this interchange, and I've, I've touched on it several times, is that if you're at Thorn and you want to get onto southbound I-5, you will go down the frontage road and through this light at Berkeley and then on to I-5. And I just wanted to touch on that again.
The frontage road, can you just describe that briefly again?
I'm sorry, I called it a frontage road. That's the first time that I call it a frontage road. It's the, it's the collector road.
Okay.
From the, the single point southbound off-ramp above Thorn. I wanted to speak a little bit to the traffic impacts on the job. So I think we all can anticipate having traffic impacts on the project. One thing that we structured our design package for is throughout the procurement phase, we incentivized the contractor to reduce impacts to the public. And so every contractor did a really good job at looking at their design, modifying their design to reduce impacts to public. So a couple of the impacts that you're going to see, there will be night lane closures on I-5. You're going to have narrowed lanes on I-5 to provide some staging area for the contractor to work and widen I-5 behind concrete barrier. And you're also going to see some minor night impacts to city streets. We're going to have night ramp closures, some total night closures of mainline I-5. And that's for us to set girders and to demolish the, the existing bridges. Really kind of high-risk construction activities that it doesn't, safety is our number one priority and we're not going to perform that work with the traveling public underneath One of the large impacts on the job is we're going to have three weekend closures, one extended closure of the Berkeley northbound ramp to I-5 to construct the, the Berkeley on-ramp connection to northbound I-5. So I said, three weekend closures and one extended closure. That extended closure, the design builder has committed to keep that under 15 days when our contract originally allowed them 30 days. So that's part of our incentivization for them to, to reduce those closure times. We actually had several different ramps where we allowed 30 days, up to 120 days of ramp closures for the contractor to utilize. And they eliminated, eliminated every single one except for the northbound Berkeley I-5. So really, they really worked hard to, to reach those incentives. The last one, last bullet on the list, is extended closure of Union Avenue at Thorn to raise the profile of Union so that we can meet the, the height of the new overpass, essentially get traffic to a high enough elevation so that they can cross I-5, continue to climb elevation to cross the sound transit.
Brandstetter, you have a question? Okay, so two questions on this slide. Of that, when we are closing the northbound ramps going to Berkeley, that, is it envisioned and been coordinated with Madigan that a, emergency vehicles looking to take people to Madigan, will they use the, the previous gate, the, what is, what is the, the main gate into JBLM? Or will they travel all the way down and use the Thorn Lane thing to then circle back through JBLM to get, get to Madigan? Has that been discussed, how that is going to work?
We've had a lot of communication with JBLM in concern to EMS. And Mr. Brandstetter, I, I don't know exactly what route they're going to take during those 15 days. We have been communicating with them extensively on the impact. Do we know which, which route they're going to be taking?
Well, in that particular case, the, it's the northbound on-ramp that will be closed. So the off-ramp to Berkeley will be open that whole time. And the off, the on-ramp from Berkeley will be open from Madigan. It's only from Tillicum side that is closed. So that particular ramp will be, won't be an impact on Madigan. Possible.
And then for the very last bullet there, do I correctly envision that that means that traffic that is coming off onto Thorn during construction, during this extended closure of Union Avenue will be detoured all the way down to Portland? And we'll, we'll see, we'll, we'll be seeing all of that traffic then have to, since they won't be able to travel through on Union and make that left on Union when they come off, they'll have to continue straight down Thorn until it merges into, to Portland and detour through the community?
The detour will be signed and it will be detoured and, and we will provide connection to the local, to the local city streets there. But again, they haven't proposed a detour to us, so I don't know the exact detour that they would be taking. But we will be providing access in a detour there.
Hey, thank you.
You're welcome.
I had a follow-up question, but I'll wait till you're done.
Okay. Well, I believe I'm done with my portion. We're going to talk about, a little bit about the communication protocol and what's next. And for that, I was going to pass the mic off to our communications manager, Kara Mitchell, but I'll sit tight for a second.
Yeah, before you do, I understood from them, one of the very first slides, that the latter phase of the project includes the interconnector road between Gravely and Thorn. And I've always wondered why it was to be constructed so late in the phasing, given the impacts to the Tillicum community. One would think that maybe that would be the first phase done. And that way, there would be better access in and out of Tillicum for not only the residents for normal purposes, but for emergency purposes. And it also gives you some, it just gives you an opportunity for traffic to be less impacted by the construction with an access road. So what is the current, since we're redesigning what we reviewed some months ago for a cost savings perspective, why don't we rethink the phasing to allow better access for the Tillicum folks? What's the impediment to the phasing, I guess is the question. Now that time has gone by and there's been some WashDOT coordination with sound transit, what's the impediment to a better phasing for the Tillicum community?
Well, I would say that the, the reason that we staged out the, the project the way that we did as far as the program for the corridor is really to try to achieve that overall project goal. And we want to relieve congestion on I-5 as soon as we can. And I, I haven't been involved in a lot of the programming, program management funding aspects of it. But I believe that's, to achieve that overall project goal, is the reason that stage two ended up where it did. And what we call stage four, or the, the Gravely Connector, is, is stage four and going to be built after stage two.
Well, it'd be helpful for us to maybe understand the method to the madness because we never understood it to be a funding issue as much as a coordination with right-of-way through sound transit. So it'd be nice to know if, over the last 18 months, that issue has been resolved to some extent where the phasing might be switched. Not to want to mess with your project timing, but it's, it's a natural question because we're going to get asked by the community as to why that simple parallel right-of-way, which seems, again, from the uninitiated, we're not traffic engineers by any means, but it just seems that that would be a fairly straightforward project piece to have done sooner than later to avoid some of the congestion nightmares you're going to have as a result of any construction project of this magnitude.
Sure. Well, that's, that's kind of how I see it. And we can provide a more detailed, a detailed answer for you as to the, the phasing of those, of those projects.
Great.
After this. Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Moving on to project communication. Kara?
Thank you, Chuck. My name's Kara Mitchell. I work with the DOT Olympic Region Communications Office. And I focus on a lot of Pierce County construction, including our JBLM corridor improvement, all four projects. So our philosophy at DOT is we drive from the web. So we post our information out onto our project pages and then we push information out from there via news releases and traffic advisories. We also use social media pretty heavily. We have one main Facebook account for the, the entire agency, but we also have several Twitter accounts. And our Tacoma Twitter account is widely used and we put information out on there about Tacoma and Pierce County projects every day. We have a GovDelivery self-subscription service application. It's, it's something that people can self-subscribe to and it's called Pierce County News. We use it a lot for the Tacoma-Pierce County HOV program, but we're also going to use it specifically for this pro, this project as well because if you're driving up and down I-5 through JBLM, most likely you're going to head up through Tacoma too. And so the same information that we, we send out on, for high-impact stuff for Tacoma-Pierce County HOV, we're going to be using the same, same methodology with, for this project. Another aspect of our communications and getting the word out about closures is, one of the best things is to have signs up on our, on our, on our ramps. So if we're going to close a ramp, an overnight ramp closure, a week in advance, you're going to see a portable message sign or a static sign that has, has that ramp closure posted. That's required on all of our con, on construction contracts throughout the county, throughout the state, and it won't be any different here in this instance. I talked about the project webpage. This whole entire program that Chuck's been talking about was broken down into four separate stages of construction. And we have project webpage for three of those right now. This, this project webpage is already updated, has information to date. We don't have beautiful graphics of each of the, the interchange designs because those just literally came to us fairly recently. And so we're, we're going to work with the contractor on getting better graphics on there so everybody can access us, access them and utilize them. Community outreach is really important to us. If any of you, I think some of you attended a lot of our pre, during the NEPA stage. We held a lot of open houses in Tillicum and in Mounts Road and over at McGavick Center. So that's pretty important to us. And we will look at the possibility of doing another community outreach meeting to Woodbrook and Tillicum right before we get ready to start construction. We'll look at that option if we think that it's important for us to get that message out to that community. Just want to get, bring you up to speed too. We have been meeting with your staff here, wonderful staff here, and getting them up to speed as we transition this project, this particular stage from a design into construction. We've met with JBLM, we've met with Madigan. We work very closely with all of our emergency responders. We train with them on a pretty frequent basis. We talk with them, all the PIOs, all the public information officers. We're exchanging information. And so my office will be driving that information out to them and they will be distributing it through their distribution channels also. So we've been in touch, we've met several times over the course of the past three months about establishing those protocols, making sure everybody is on the same page. We've all got the right distribution list going. So I think you're going to have the information that you need. We want you to have that information sooner than later. That's our goal. We don't like surprises either. So, and we know the public doesn't either. And we know your phone will ring if something isn't going right. So we want to avoid that. I'm going to talk briefly about what's next. On this slide, we've got the, the vertical red dashed line in 2018 of basically where we are at with all four projects right now. Stage one, Mounts Road to Center Drive, we're finishing up final striping on southbound I-5 this week during the overnight hours. Left on that project is final signage for both northbound and southbound I-5 and then that project will be done. That was the very first project out of this overall JBLM corridor improvements project, this larger scale project that was funded. And to kind of add to the question, try to answer the question about how do we establish project timelines? There's a, there is a funding schedule that's driving this behind that. And then there's also right-of-way that's driving it too. And I'm not involved with a lot of the right-of-way stuff, but I do pay attention to when the money is coming available and when we can actually start construction. So to, just to give you an idea of how these things are being phased out, that's kind of the driving force behind it. We are in the circled area, is stage two. We're at the very beginning of the design-build concept. Down below that, stage three, Mounts Road to Tillicum-Dubon Road, we held an open house on April 11th. Talk about those proposed design options for exit 119. And then stage four is also moving along. And if you have additional questions about that, Kirk can answer that, those questions here towards the end. So with that, if there's any additional questions, myself and my colleagues can answer. Be happy to answer them.
Any questions from Ms. Mitchell? Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
So I could speak to the Gravely Thorn Connector?
Sure.
If you, if I would help, just while we're all here. So what we're calling the stage four project there is how it's been split off. So a little background on that, we started off initially understanding the advantages locally of having the Gravely Thorn Connector completed early. We started off working with sound transit on both, we had to get easements for the new crossings at Berkeley and Thorn, for the new bridges over the railroad tracks. We also need a substantial easement from them for the Gravely Thorn Connector. We need 25 feet. We need 25 feet of their 100-foot-wide right-of-way, that whole length between Gravely Lake Drive and Thorn Lane. And so it's a pretty substantial imposition on their right-of-way. So we were trying to work that with Sound Transit at the same time as those two easements for the bridges at Thorn and Berkeley. We quickly found that the process was being dragged down by that Gravely-Thorn Connector, and we were not going to be able to get the easements to keep the Stage 2 project rolling. The Stage 2 project is about half of the overall program. It's really the big piece that we had to keep moving. So a decision was made to separate the two out, get the easements for those two bridges secured, and then re-enter the process on the Gravely-Thorn easement. So we just this spring, after about a year and a half, got the easements for those two bridge crossings. And as soon as we did, we had what's shown there is the compatibility report in Stage 4, which is our document to justify our Gravely-Thorn Connector roadway within their right-of-way, showing that there's still room for their railroad operations. Two weeks ago, we had that ready to go. That went to Sound Transit and is in their initial review right now. So depending on how that process goes, and then also the Tacoma Country and Golf Club, those are the two long-duration bars on there. We really don't have high expectations for those moving quickly. But if they do, that, the Gravely-Thorn Connector can be advanced. And we're actively working that to make that happen. So Gravely-Thorn got pushed back, but it was, in essence, to not lose the main Stage 2 project.
Got it. From a right-of-way perspective, it sounds like, obviously, the work with Sound Transit is progressing on the golf club side. I was of the impression that many discussions have been had, and there have been some tentative agreements with the revised plan to just make this happen. So if it's a friendly right-of-way acquisition, it seems to me that there shouldn't be too much delay for you.
Well, we will see. The initial step is that compatibility report with Sound Transit, because without that, there is no Gravely-Thorn Connector. We are looking at a seven-foot easement, or a seven-foot right-of-way acquisition from the Country and Golf Club and a 25-foot easement from the railroad. And so most of the facility will be on the railroad right-of-way.
Sound Transit's right-of-way.
Right. So without Sound Transit railroad participation, we, it won't, there's not enough space for the facility. So the first step is to establish that, get agreement from Sound Transit through that compatibility report process.
And the outcome of the compatibility report, from Washdott's perspective, has been favorable?
We don't know yet. We just submitted the draft of it about a week and a half ago. And they, we, comments are due within the next week or so on that first draft.
From Sound Transit.
From Sound Transit.
But from your perspective, you guys prepared the report?
We think it fits.
Okay.
So we will see what the Sound Transit opinion is.
Very good. Any other questions? Mr. Brenstetter?
Thank you, Mr. Brenstetter. Yes, as I look at this slide, the one thing that I'm not quite clear about, from Thorn to Gravely Lake, northbound, our understanding was they were going to add one more lane that essentially was a, you didn't have to merge into anything. You would be able to stay off to be able to go and do that. But I, I said, this doesn't, I'm not clear as to whether that's going to be done in Stage 2 or in Stage 4, that additional northbound lane on the northbound side of I-5.
That additional lane is part of the Stage 2 project. So that will, that's in the design.
So Stage 2 is actually all the way to Gravely Lake?
Correct. Yeah, that's the northernmost portion of the work.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, and just one more thing to add to that. Part of the design builder's proposal with that single off-ramp at Thorn, to help manage volumes with that, they are also adding a southbound auxiliary lane from Gravely Lake Drive to Thorn Lane, much like that northbound one. So there is one more lane being added in that segment as well. So there will be some additional southbound capacity between the two interchanges as well.
One final question. Just because it's nice and sunny out, and no one wants to leave early. With regard to the cost for Stage 4, what's the estimated project cost for that?
I do not know that off the top of my head. But the overall cost is not, the cost of that is not the driving factor in the timing. It's purely the working with Sound Transit.
Got it. Okay, that's good to know, because I know that there's a $40 million savings.
Well, what that does, that does help preserve, because we are working within a fixed overall budget for the program. And so money saved now does help ensure that Stage 3 and Stage 4 can move along as planned.
Very good. So no other questions? Thank you very much for coming tonight. We do appreciate it. We're now at the public comment section of tonight's agenda. This is the opportunity for members of the audience to address any item of interest or concern to the council under the public comment period. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. Groups who have at least three members may present up to a 10-minute period of time. We do have a public hearing tonight, which is under the regular agenda. So if you have comments related to the public hearing on the 2019 to '24 six-year transportation improvement program, I would encourage you to wait, if you want to address any comments to that issue. I'd wait to the public hearing on that issue in just a few minutes on the agenda. But right now, this is a time for public comment for any other issues of interest or concern. On the sign-in sheet tonight, we do have Maureen Fife, who spoke already, and Elliot Stockstead indicated he wanted to, or at least was here, didn't necessarily have to speak. Got it. Glenn Spieth is then next.
Glenn Spieth, Lakewood Historical Society. As some of you know already, the Lakewood Historical Society and Graymar, who owns the Colonial Center, have entered into a five-year lease for the Terrace Restaurant and the lobby of the theater. So we are all signed, sealed, and delivered, except for our occupancy permits and the little bit of work, hopefully, that Graymar needs to get done before we can start moving. I'm anxious, but I know it's something that takes a lot of time. So we're looking forward to making the move, also helping with the Motor Avenue activities that are coming up, and hope it doesn't shut us down like it did on the Mount Tacoma side of the complex. Parking was a real bear on that side for some time. So we look forward to being able to move and show you a new place with lots more room, about 6,000 square feet compared to 900 that we have now. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Sounds exciting. Next, we have Mr. Zach Baker.
Thanks. As mentioned, Zach Baker. I'm here with Cascade Affordable Housing Consultants. Our primary goal is providing safe, long-term workforce housing to individuals and families of Washington State. Cascade, along with our management and development partners, currently own and manage more than 2,500 units here in Washington and over 17,000 units nationally. Wanted to come in front of council tonight and revisit the multifamily tax exemption application for the proposed Cloverbrook Apartments located in the Spring Brook community. For those of you who are unfamiliar with the project, it's something we've been working on for over a year as pioneers in the reinvestment and revitalization of the Spring Brook community. June of last year, prior to purchasing the land, I met here in person with Andrea Bell and Courtney Brunel to confirm the financial feasibility of the site through use of your development incentive, the multifamily tax exemption. They confirmed in writing via the letter in your packet there that the land was, in fact, eligible. And with that as the initial hurdle, as well as several months of site visits, environmental reports, construction estimates, and further documentation provided by the city, the owners of the company I am employed by made the $2 million decision to purchase that land. Once we purchased the land, I submitted the formal tax exemption request. And unfortunately, we were denied for being outside of the residential target area that makes you eligible, even though I had the written confirmation on department letterhead there. I immediately spoke to the city and was assured this was no issue. The map that designated us at the time was never formally codified, and therefore, we would need to apply for an expansion to the residential target area. This was possible, because although we are not in the RTA, we are in the Tax Incentive Urban Use Center, as shown on the second attachment there in your packet. That means that per municipal code, we're eligible to apply for an expansion to the RTA, which would therefore... By the way, can we have this reset? I'm actually here with a group of coworkers as well, so the 10-minute, thank you. So anyway, we applied to get the RTA expanded, which would therefore make us eligible for the exemption. And we're denied again. That brings me here tonight, because I'm highly frustrated with the city council and the inconsistencies in city policy. The staff has been wonderful, very responsive, great to work with. But the decisions that were made to contradict the letter and documentation that had been provided are very frustrating for a developer making very real business decisions. The city of Lakewood currently incentivizes not only the production of multifamily housing, but more specifically affordable multifamily housing. The market rate housing is incentivized through an eight-year tax exemption. And affordable housing or workforce housing is incentivized through a 12-year tax exemption. That leads me to believe that the workforce housing is viewed in the city's eyes to be more valuable and therefore more incentivized. The Cloverbrook community that we've been planning for over the past year is basically planned to serve households averaging 60% of the AMI. And in fact, will allow residents, whether individuals or families, to qualify up to 80% AMI. This looks like about a $60,000 household. That kind of an income relates to jobs like city clerks, law enforcement officers, entry-level officers in the armed forces, school teachers. It's not what you would typically think of when you may associate affordable housing with some of the more problematic areas that currently exist in the Spring Brook neighborhood. This is a community that we view as really an asset to Spring Brook, something that will turn around that community or at least help in the revitalization of it. My grandparents lived in Lakewood until they passed away a few years ago. My dad graduated from Lakes High School. My sister still lives in Lakewood. And I have a niece and nephew that attend Lake Louise Elementary. These are my neighbors, too. But I think we still owe them the ability to live in a safe, clean community that gives them just enough relief to still provide for their families, for their children, to buy quality food and quality clothing. Outside of Lakewood, but within five miles of this room, are 200 units that Cascade Affordable has helped to develop over the last 15 years. And we'd be happy to open up any of them for site visits, tours, to demonstrate that we're not absentee landlords. We maintain these properties and that these properties open opportunities that would otherwise not be available to the residents living in them. It's unfortunate to say that the denial of the tax exemption is effectively the city of Lakewood saying no to new, clean, safe housing to your teachers, to your law enforcement, to your military, and to your city workers. It's our hope that this is something that can be revisited and worked through in order to provide additional housing to the members of our community who need it most. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Ms. Joyce King.
Yes, my name is Ms. M. Joyce King. And I'm here once again to talk to the city council about the Crisis Intervention Team program that you have. I was introduced to it here in Lakewood. And I actually live in Boise, Idaho now. And when I moved to Boise, Idaho, they had all the program, but what they didn't have was a facilitator. So I called back here to Lakewood. Lakewood helped me with the NAMI, National Alliance for Mental Illness, to find a facilitator. Now, the Crisis Intervention Team is widespread in Idaho. And I just wanted to come back and say thank you.
Thank you very much. That is it for... Mr. Hogan, you signed up on the public hearing one. Would you prefer to speak during normal public comment period? Okay.
Dennis Hogan, Lakewood, Washington. It was interesting to me to watch the city council filled with people from Oak Brook. When Lakewood became a city, I figured there were three existential threats that I was concerned about. DSHS, DSHS's impact on the schools and the schools' impact on the real estate market. And then along with that was the possibility, which did happen, that insurance rates would rise, because we weren't concerned about blind corners. But the way bureaucracies are built, you have a purpose for them to do something. And then you staff it with people that can't be fired. And that can result in an example of just absolute infantilism. Now, you can bring somebody from DSH in here, but I maintain that. What normally people call a food stamp is now the EBT card. You, as a taxpayer, are buying pot, alcohol, buying tents for homeless on EBT cards. Now, in a business, we ask questions every day when we see something odd, and then we do a study. But you don't do studies, and you don't ask questions, and you don't confront. But you see that EBT card there? Does that make sense to you, distributing money? Look at it. When you get that card, you get, you get the card, you don't put a picture on it, you get a PIN. What does that tell you? Because the card is easily transferable. Get somebody from DSH in here and ask them about this. And then get somebody else who knows more than they do to criticize it. They affect the housing market. They affect everything. We don't know how many illegal aliens are in this city. We know that Inslee has been supporting, with Obama, 7,000 Middle East people that we can't bet. We've got them being financed by the government. A third of Lakewood is on food stamps. I've given you that information. I've also given you studies that were done, pointed by our representatives... I've also given you studies that were done by our representatives that the food stamp program is being run carelessly and recklessly. But the bridge will... But the wall will be built, you can bet. Trump doesn't say the right things, but he does the right things, and the people behind him are getting the real, relevant information out there that taxpayers want here, and that will affect, hopefully, some of these problems.
Thank you very much. That is the last individual who has signed up to speak to the council during the public comment period. Are there any other individuals who wish to address the council during public comment? If not, I'll declare the public comment period closed. We now turn to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of June 4th, 2018. B, approval of the minutes of the city council study session of June 11th, 2018. C, motion number 2018-31, appointing Adriana Bayer and Darrell Owens to serve on the Lakewood Arts Commission through October 15th, 2018, and Lena Smith through October 15th, 2019. Motion number 2018-32, authorizing the execution of an agreement with Robert Drawl, landscape architect PS, in the amount of $199,995 to provide design and permitting services for Harry Todd waterfront improvements Phase 1. E, motion number 2018-33, authorizing the execution of an amendment to the agreement with Iverson and Sons Incorporated in the amount of $157,275 for the construction of the DeCovan Drive Traffic Calming Project. And F, items filed in the office of the city clerk, Public Safety Advisory Committee, meeting minutes of March 7th, 2018. Two, Lakewood Promise, meeting minutes of May 3rd, 2018. And three, Arts Commission meeting minutes of May 7th, 2018.
Thank you very much. And before I ask if there are any items on the consent agenda that members of council may wish to remove, I have just a clarification question, perhaps to the city manager on item E. Mr. Coffield, I understood the pack of material. The actual amendment wasn't in the amount of $157,275, but that would be then the total amended price for the project. Is that correct? Because the actual amended work isn't that high. I think it's something around 50-some-odd thousand?
That's correct. You'll be approving the increase, which brings it to the $157,000.
Right. I just want to have some clarity there that we weren't approving $154,000, $157,000 of new work. Okay. Are there any items on the consent agenda that a council member may wish to remove? Very good. Any others? Many other members? With regard to the removal of item C, is there a motion to adopt a consent agenda as presented without item C? Any further discussion? All those in favor of the consent agenda minus item C, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We now turn to item C. Correction, the consent agenda has been adopted minus item C. We now move to item C. Mr. Branstadter.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, I asked for the site on to be removed so that I could offer an amendment to it, but to further along into that process, I would move adoption of motion 2018-31.
Is there a second? It's been moved by Mr. Branstadter and seconded by Ms. Barth that we adopt motion number 2018-31. Is there any further discussion? Yes, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I would move to amend motion 2018-31 by changing the appointment dates for Adriana Bayer and Darrell Owens from October 15th, 2018, to October 15th, 2021.
The rationale seems obvious, but if you'd like to speak to that?
Well, if someone would second it, I would.
Second.
Ms. Barth is second.
I don't think that an 120-day appointment serves either the Arts Commission or the city well the applications of these individuals indicated their willingness to serve an extended period of time, and it makes more sense to just make their appointments through 2021 as opposed to doing this all again two months from now.
That makes sense to me. Is there any legal impediment? Miss, any attorney?
I do not believe so, no. I think it can be moved.
And I haven't heard whether or not the applicants are agreeable to sign up for the extended stay program. I don't see any reason why they wouldn't be. I've talked to... I met Mr. Owens. He seemed to be excited about serving. I guess they could always resign if they didn't want to serve as long as the appointment.
And, Mr. Mayor, the only question would be, I am looking at the motion. It says that the council would be making the appointment. Typically, the appointment is made by the mayor and affirmed by the council.
Right.
So that would mean that it's really within the mayor's purview. But right now, you're the mayor.
Well, then I would be fine with doing the appointment, presuming that we vote to adopt the amendment to the motion. So without any further discussion, all those in favor of Mr. Branstadter's amendment to motion 2018-31, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The amendment carries. We now move to motion 2018-31 as amended. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of motion 2018-31 as amended, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion 2018-31 as amended has been adopted. We now move to the regular agenda. First up is public hearings and appeals. This is the date set for a public hearing on the city of Lakewood, 2019-2024 Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program. And for this, we have Mr. Ott.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor Whalen, members of the council. The city is in the process of updating the Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program. Updating the program is an annual process required by statute meant to assure continued consistency with comprehensive planning goals and evaluate current transportation needs. The public hearing tonight is an important part of that process, affording the public the opportunity to comment on the program prior to its adoption. The draft program was presented at city council on May 29th at a study session. In addition, the document was placed on the city website, and a request for comments was made through social media. The city has received one comment to date, and that came in last night, and that was to add sidewalks along Fort Stillicum Park on Elwood Drive. That was the only comment that's been received to date. Any comments received from tonight's public hearing will be reviewed and evaluated by staff. Any required modifications can be incorporated into the final draft of the tip, currently scheduled for adoption on July 2nd at city council. We look forward to receiving comments from the public this evening.
Thank you very much. Before we proceed to the public hearing, do any members... Do any of the members of council have questions for Mr. Ott? Thank you, Mr. Ott.
Thank you.
This is the time set for the public hearing on the 2019-2024 Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program as described by Mr. Ott. The only individual signed up tonight to speak at the public hearing on this topic is Mr. Haugen. I see Mr. Haugen has left the building. Are there any other individuals in the audience who may wish to speak during this public hearing on the 2019-2024 Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. We now turn to unfinished business. Madam Clerk.
Motion number 2018-34, adopting findings of fact in support of ordinance number 682.
Thank you very much. For this, we have Heidi Walker, city attorney.
Good evening, Mayor Pro-Tam Whalen and members of the council. I am back before you with formal findings and conclusions. In essence, they begin with just a little bit of the background that this goes with the moratorium that was adopted by the council, and other than that, they're pretty much what I read to you that night, which might have sounded like what's in our lawsuit, because it is what we've alleged in our lawsuit. The two sections I would call your attention to are at the bottom of page 118 and the top of page 119. These are the two things I added based on the public testimony, and obviously, if the council feels that there's something else that needs to be changed, they need to reflect your actual findings. So number five, by concentrating adult family homes in Oak Brook, the state violates the purpose of the Adult Family Home statute. The purpose of the state's adult family home law is to avoid institutionalizing vulnerable adults, but by failing to fairly distribute the homes throughout the county and the state, the state has recreated institutional living conditions in the Oak Brook community. And number six, beyond the concentration of these homes is the conduct observed, which lacks integration into the neighborhood. Residents of the home are rarely seen, and attempts to connect with them by neighbors have not been entirely successful. So those would be the two things that were added beyond what was presented to you that night. I'd be happy to try and answer any questions the council may have. What will happen with this upon passage is that it will be appended to the ordinance. I opted to go with a motion instead of a resolution because I didn't want there to be any confusion in the legislative history. This actually goes to support the moratorium that you've adopted. It's part of that process.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Any questions for the city attorney? Quick question from my standpoint. Assuming council adopts motion 2018-34, if one had standing to appeal, what would be the process by which one would appeal the council's decision?
The council's decision to adopt a moratorium? I believe that that would have to go to the superior court, and it would have to be, in order to gain standing, you would have to be one of the people that was somehow blocked from something by virtue of the moratorium. So if you are someone who's just generally up with adult family homes, you like them and you think they should be everywhere, that doesn't necessarily give you standing to come after our moratorium. You would probably, more likely, be successful if you were someone who applied for a license to the city, and because of the moratorium, when the city turned you down, you have then engendered some sort of harm. That's not to say there aren't creative people out there who will try to string something different together in order to get into court, but typically, you only have a harm once the city denies you the ability to run your home.
Would one with standing, assuming one had standing, have recourse through the Growth Management Hearings Board, or would it be exclusive to the superior court first?
I think it's exclusive to the superior court. The Growth Management Hearings Board is really designed to enforce obligations on the part of different governmental entities under the Growth Management Act specifically, and moratoria are found in the Growth Management Act. I think the way that you'd have to do that, you'd have to get a little bit creative about how it impacted land use planning. And actually, the city's position is that we're seeking enforcement of land use planning because the state has, in essence, violated the density requirements with the adult family homes. So I think that would be awkward, but not impossible, that they might go about it that way. Moratoria is provided for under the Growth Management Act.
Thank you very much. Does that prompt any further questions of our city attorney? Thank you. If not, do I have a motion to adopt motion 2018-34 with the findings as articulated by the city attorney? It's been moved by council member Simpson, seconded by council member Bokey, that we adopt motion 2018-34. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor of adoption of motion 2016-18, rather, -34, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion has been adopted. We now turn to new business. Is there any new business to be had?
It's done, Deputy Mayor.
Reports by the city manager are next. Mr. Coffield.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor and council members. Just a few items to report. Last Thursday, the city of Lakewood hosted its annual developer forum at the McGavick Center, and the deputy mayor provided opening remarks and a welcoming. We had Dr. Ali Madaris from the University of Washington, who was our keynote speaker, and then we had some economic updates specific to the city, specifically what's going on with the downtown plan, and then just generally why it's beneficial to do business here within the city of Lakewood. We had over 100 people show up, so again, it was very, very successful, and I know, actually, council member Barth was in attendance as well, so I just wanted to pass that on. We heard from JBLM last week that, beginning tomorrow evening at 9:00 in the evening, 2,100 hours, through Wednesday at 2,100 hours, for a 24-hour period, they are going to only have... They have 15 gates. During that time period, only nine of them are going to be open, and the purpose of that is they want to evaluate ingress and egress in the event that they have to perhaps strengthen security and shut down certain gates in the event of an emergency or something along those lines. So even with Main Gate, with the construction going on and such, it might get a little congested going in and out of the... Out of JBLM for a 24-hour period, again, beginning late on Tuesday through all day, all day Wednesday. So I just wanted to point that out. The Fort Stillicum Park roadway project continues, and the contractor is expected to complete the work by a week from Friday on June 29th, and so at that point in time, the roadway will be opened up for public. Some of the major work that they're doing right now, even though the asphalt is all down, is they're doing the restoration work on the side of the roadway that was all torn up and going to be hydroseating that. The rental housing safety program continues to move forward. I did want to point out a specific inspection that we undertook last week in the Spring Brook neighborhood called Lakewood Estates, which is a 32-unit development comprised of two buildings, each with 16 units. Unfortunately, the inspection failed. We identified a number of major structural issues, including major rot, ceilings beginning to fail, stairway issues, just major structural issues. And so the owner is in the process right now of coming in for permits to make improvements and bring the buildings up to code. At this point in time, we have given them until next week, June 25th, to do that. However, if they're showing progress, we'd be more than happy to work with them to get that work squared away. If for some reason, the owner or owners fail to do that, then it's likely that we'll have to post unsafe notices on all of the units, and that means then we'll work with the owner and others to relocate those tenants. But again, just another example of what we're finding as we go through this rental housing safety program. On another note, another apartment complex in the Woodbrook neighborhood called Centerbrook Village Apartments, which is 135-unit development, that is actually on the list to be inspected. However, we've had to bump that up, and the reason being is because the fire district, they were out there recently and come to find out that they don't have fire flow on their property. They actually, at one time, had an internal fire system that was... The water came from a private well, but somewhere along the lines, the property owners cut it off and kind of hid the hydrants, if you will. So, long story short, both the city and the fire district are working with that property owner to drive a water line in there so that they have fire flow, so that they can stay operational and that they're not going to have to move folks out. I believe the fire marshal did order the owner to set up a fire watch until that happens. Out in Oak Brook, I think the council's familiar with the, what we call the Ruby Property, which is a 2.3-acre residential development property. The current property owner, who's based in Bellevue, it's called Ruby 62 Holdings, is looking to sell the property. Actually, they have put it on the market. We did learn today that there is a buyer, North Ridge Homes, which is actually doing some work around here. They're doing some work in Manitoba, in the Manitoba neighborhood of South Tacoma, and so again, they're in the process of perhaps buying it and then come forward with a development proposal. The assessed value of the property is, I think, $340,000. The last time it sold to the current owner was in 2014 for $700,000. So I would imagine, given it's a zone, single-family residential, it's probably selling for something north of $700,000. Our roadways will be getting some fresh paint, as well as our crosswalks and Jern signals and such, beginning in the early part of July. We led a contract with Pierce County Public Works earlier this year to do that work, so you'll, again, you'll see some striping out there beginning the first week of July. It'll probably take a month or so to get through the whole city in terms of what needs to be done. An item that we're going to be bringing back for further council review and discussion is the engineering and pavement standards, and if you recall, about a month ago, we came forward with some ideas and some alternatives. In advance of the next presentation, we are going to reach out to the utility providers and get their feedback and input, so we'll have that for your July 23rd study session as well. If anybody on the council is interested, the city of Lakewood, we're going to be actually hosting the State Department of Commerce Short Course on Local Planning. It's a great introduction to Growth Management Act and... It's a great introduction to Growth Management Act and planning, and it's something that we highly encourage, for example, planning commissioners to attend. But if you're interested in attending that, that will be here, right here, in the city council chambers on September 6th, and it will go from 6:15 to 9:15. And registration is encouraged. You don't need to. They're not gonna turn anyone away at the door, and there is no cost. But again, if you're interested in attending, please let us know. If you have not attended this, this kind of a course in the past, I would certainly highly recommend it. It's, it can be very, very informative as it relates, again, to planning and local government, and specifically the Growth Management Act. Say again, councilmember? PM, yes. Not AM. Six, 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. 18:15 to 21:15.
I bet we could get some AWC credit for that municipal, whatever that thing is.
I think you do, yeah. If you're part of the CMLs, you do, Deputy Mayor. Yes, that does count. Yep. What for you? Last week, the Pierce County Library Board of Trustees determined that they are gonna put on the November 2018 ballot, an initiative to essentially a property tax levy lid lift, to bring their property tax rate up to their maximum authority of 50 cents. They're currently at 42 cents. They have not gone to the voters to have this reinstated since, 2006 was the last time they have done it, so 12 years ago. This is a very common mechanism that special districts, such as library districts, fire districts, do it with their EMS levy, and they come back to the vote of the people to raise that property tax levy up to their, their maximum amount, or sometimes a little bit under that. So, again, that'll be on the, on the ballot. The purpose of those monies is to continue providing basic services. It's essentially for their MNO. It's not for capital. It's just to continue to provide the services that the library provides throughout their service area, which is most of Pierce County, with the exception of Tacoma and Puyallup and for Crest.
Do you have any anecdotal thought about how that might impact their 2019 capital request?
If it passes, then they will move forward with the capital bond, specifically for Lakewood, in November of 2019. If it does not pass, they're gonna have to recheck that because the MNO levy, the property tax levy lid lift in 2018, is to provide the funding for not just current libraries, but any new libraries that they bring onboard as well. So they would have a bit of a pause there. The, the, the property tax levy lid lift required, does not require 60%, it requires 50-plus 1%. And in the past, when they have gone to the vote of the people, they have not had any, they have not had any challenges. I think the only challenge they might have in this environment is just voter fatigue, particularly from some of the recent initiatives, you know, particularly Sound Transit, people seem to not view that as favorably here in Pierce County as perhaps some of the other counties. I'd like to report that our police chief, Mike Zarro, was met with Washington Association of Sheriffs and Police Chiefs, or WASPIC, regarding an onsite reaccreditation visit. So, long story short, Lakewood Police Department is looking to get its agency reaccredited, which is a very positive reflection on the chief and our police officers, as well as our non-uniform personnel that work in PD. Also, you know, it demonstrates the dedication and commitment to quality law enforcement of our police department. Also, I'd like to point out that not all law enforcement agencies, police departments, sheriff's office, tribal police, et cetera, are accredited. Matter of fact, City of Lakewood is one of 54, and there are 263 law enforcement agencies in the state. So it does put us in the high percentage there in terms of, of how we do business. Along those lines, last week, we were notified by Standard and Poor's that they have increased the city's bond rating to AA, which is absolutely fantastic. The only thing higher than that is a double A-plus and a triple A. And since 2014, our bond rating has actually been increased twice, however, it's increased three steps. Back in 2014, it was an A-minus. They bumped over the A in the A, no, it was, it was an A, rather. They bumped over the A, too, and went to a double A-minus, and now we're up to a double A. That's a very positive reflection on all of you, as our policymakers here at the city, and of course, our department directors and staff, as it relates to the financial stability of our organization. The Public Works Engineering Department is in the process of implementing a strategy to get more streetlights out in the city, so as it gets a little darker, back, you know, in September, October, November. And so, looking to install anywhere from 345 to upwards of 375 new streetlights. Good number of those, almost 300 of them, are on the west side of the city, essentially north of 1/12, between Lake Stillicum and far west is a whole swath of streets and roadways in there. Another key area is one that I know has, they've been asking for years, is gonna require poles as well, because most of the streetlights were hanging them off of existing TPU or PSE poles, so it's very, very efficient to get them out there. However, there is one neighborhood, South Gate, the north part of South Gate, that, so half the neighborhood has streetlights, the other half does not, and so we wanna get to that neighborhood sooner rather than later. You know, again, the good news is that we do have the financial dollars within our transportation, CIP, to make that investment. At the same time, once those lights are up and operational, it's gonna have an impact on our operational budget to the tune of upwards of $75,000 a year on our light bill as we look out into the future, beginning 2019. But again, you know, the upside to that, which is more important, is, you know, the public safety impact that streetlights have in our neighborhoods. A preliminary analysis, that's being spearheaded by SSMCP and the, partnering with the University of Tacoma and some graduate students, shows that JBLM's economic impact is not 3.3 billion or even 6 billion, it's over $11 billion on the Pierce County-Thurston County area, which is just unbelievable. And this is a preliminary analysis. The full report is expected to be available in the next couple of months, and of course, when we have that, we'll share that with you. Another item that we're working on, and you, you heard from Mr. Ott this, this evening on the, the TIP, which is our wish list of projects that we'd like to do, then there's the CIP, the Capital Improvement Plan, which is the projects that are actually funded. And we're in the process of developing, similar to our Economic Development brochure, a transportation brochure that illustrates all of the projects going back to 2014, ones that have been completed, and then the ones that are underway in 18 as we look all the way out into 2023. So look for this document probably in the next, in the next month or so. And then, as it relates to your council calendar, the AWC Annual Conference, I know Councilmember Branstadter and I will be attending that next week, is in Yakima from June 26th to the 29th. And, and then the next major event after that is July 14th, which is Summer Fest, and all the activities, including the triathlon associated with that. So with that, Deputy Mayor, that's my report.
Thank you very much. Any questions of the city manager? The Developer Forum, your first point was quite good. I was going to see if there might be any interest or opportunity for Mr. Madaris to come be with us during some study session on the downtown plan, because he was really great, and it really would help maybe tie in some of that information for those who didn't have a chance to attend, if he's willing.
Yeah, we, I actually, I spoke with him afterwards. He'd be more than willing to do that, just based on his schedule, probably be sometimes this fall.
Yeah, it'd be great.
September, October, even November timeframe.
That was really good. There are no other questions of Mr. Cawfield. We'll now turn to council comments. Councilmember Bokey.
Thank you, Deputy, thank you, Deputy Mayor Whalen. Just a couple of things. We have a TCRC meeting Thursday, and I just tried to send the rest of you the packet, but apparently it didn't send, so if you get it, I'll, I'll try to get here in a minute. The importance of the meeting on Thursday night is we are voting on the transportation package, which you've been, we've, we've talked about here, that Lakewood has, has three items on that, for a total of $1,922,000. One's for right-of-way purchases on Silicon Boulevard, which is the next step in, in, in getting that worked on. Lakewood III, which is a paving project on Pack Highway from 108th to 512, which is a heavily-used area, but it, it is wearing out, tons of traffic there. And Lakewood IV, which I don't, I don't know, and I've got the thing in front of me, and it's not on their little map that I can see, so I'm not, what's Lakewood IV?
Councilmember Bokey, that is designed for South Tacoma Way between 80th and 88th, or 88th to 80th. So the last segment of South Tacoma Way up to the Tacoma, City of Tacoma boundaries.
So it is an important meeting, and I will, I assume it will be well-attended. I have not heard anything, unless Councilmember Whalen has heard that, of any movement at all on those things, so, you know, some cities did exceedingly well. I think we did, we did pretty well, considering how, how tough it is. Tacoma and University Place both did very, very well. Sumner had, had one nice, very large project. And of course, Pierce Transit took 2.3 million, so our $1,009,000, given that our other efforts that we've made in the road area with our own money, I, I think will work out pretty well, and it, and it keeps the Silicon Boulevard, you know, west of the bridge going forward. And then the other item, just wanted to make everyone aware, Open House on Thursday, June 28th, the Communities and Schools New Me, New Place, and assist across from Clover Park High School in that, that office complex there, 10828 Gravelly Lake Drive Southwest, Suite 104, that is June, Thursday, June 28th, between 4:00 and 6:00 PM. And that's it for me, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you very much. Ms. Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. On Tuesday, I packed food with the food bank off of 92nd Street for three hours. That was, in fact, it was a rotary, and so I supported them with that. Then I spent the rest of the week with the Army. On Wednesday, I attended the AUSA Annual Meeting, which was held at Eagles Pride. It was a great turnout, great meeting, and General Carterham was our guest speaker, and as usual, he was hilarious, as always. So it was very good, good networking opportunities, and opportunities to talk to the different organizations. On Thursday, I attended the Army Ball, and General Hammonds was also the guest speaker, and we were betting we were gonna hear some of the same jokes, and we didn't. So that was, it was, he just has a lot of, lot of comments to make to keep the audience in stitches, so he's, he did good. They did that Perbeville Drink.
Oh, the grog ball?
There it is.
For you, Mayor.
It was interesting. I, host at our table did bring us a sample, and so we took a sip, and it was just like Kool-Aid, for about 10 seconds. And after that, we knew we didn't want any more of that. But that was a lot of fun. It was well-attended. It was over 650 people in attendance there. And then Friday, I golfed with AUSA, and in that tournament, and by the way, we were four-under, first time ever. And from that, that tournament, it was a fundraiser for scholarships, and there was $11,000 raised for that scum, scow, from that tournament. And then Saturday, I worked with the Rotarians at the pavilion, spreading soil along with our deputy mayor.
A little rake?
But, no secrets around here, so. They said bring a rake. I bought what I had. It was a little baby rake. And then, and just for your information, tomorrow night at PLU, we will have the Clover Park Technical College graduation, so that's it.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Barth.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So, do I have to turn it on, or does it just go?
Well, I can, I can turn it on. There you go.
Thank you. So, my birthday present to you, Deputy Mayor, is I'm not gonna sing to you.
Wow, thank you.
I know, your lucky day.
It's a present.
I did attend the Developer Forum, Forum on Thursday, and it was excellent. I think Ms. Newton did a great job, was well-run, well-put-together, and well-attended, and some really good comments. And I think we're out there generating excitement about our community, and I, that just leads to more excitement, more development, so my congratulations to her on that. And I did not have the same social schedule that Ms. Moss had. Mine was work, work, work. So I'm glad you were out networking. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Branstadter.
Hold on here. There you are. Yeah. I'll definitely leave yours on.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. On Thursday, I attended the Lake City Neighborhood Association meeting, and the primary topic at the meeting was a presentation by staff from the Clover Park School District regarding the site plan and construction plans for the new middle school. And appropriately, there were, that topic raised the level of attendance at the Lake City City Meeting, that it, it, it appears that there are some concerns about neighbors as to exactly what it's going to be and how close things are going to be to property lines as compared to what there are now. And it was emphasized by the school district folks that the site plan is not final, it's still in negotiation with the, impending approval of, with, with, with the city. Expectedly, concerns about traffic and what is going to be done about traffic as well. There were issues raised about the pathways by which students are going to walk to school, and even though they're going to be somewhat the same as what there is now, there is some concern that those pathways will be impacted by additional traffic because more students will be being, being brought to, 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 to the school significantly, particularly given that the school intends to have a significant JBLM student population as compared to the, the other middle schools in the, in the city to do that. On Tuesday, I attended an event at the Y that was a training given by some folks from Tacoma Community College about pathways out of poverty. And it was essentially a, an informative thing about things you need to know about how people who are in poverty view things and think so that you can shape your responses and, and, and your ways to respond to those, you know, appropriately, to be able to go and do that. Attended by about 15 folks from around the community, so I thought that was a, a good piece of, good interest to be able to go and do that. I, I was there from the city, groups of nonprofits were represented, and the school district had someone there, and so that worked, worked well. That's all I really have, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you very much. Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I seem to recall you opened tonight's meeting with a reference to the Twilight Zone, which led me to start to think about Rod Serling, and what a great writer he was, that he could put so much information and thought into a 30-minute show that I, I watched faithfully for years, which led me to... which led me to Mary Moss at the Grog Bowl, and no wonder her rake was so small, because after a drink at the Grog Bowl, Mary, everything gets small. But in all due seriousness, I do have a question. I'm serious, I'm serious. Are tow trucks, the tow trucks that work in Lakewood, are they required, are they under any kind of requirement by the city to clean up the mess after there's a car accident? Because I watched an individual hit a telephone pole on Stillicum. I watched the fire department respond, and they did an excellent job, police responded, did an excellent job. Tow truck comes in, takes the car, and leaves everything in the middle of the road, and there was a businessman that came out from his business, and he swept up all of the plastic and glass. That person was I, which led me to think, if these people are licensed to do business in the City of Lakewood and they're not picking up after these, maybe there needs to be a memorandum of reminder that this is part and parcel of their contract. Thank you. Yeah. Anyway, thank you.
Is that it? Why didn't you take a picture of it and send it on my Lakewood 311? Could have borrowed Mary's very small rake, perhaps. Yeah, exactly. The Developers Forum, I did attend that this last week, it really was well-done. I didn't get a chance to stay through the whole thing, but I thought Mr. Maderas, Dr. Maderas's presentation as it relates to growth, planning, what millennials are desiring in terms of live, work, and play opportunities, really plays into what we're looking at, I think, in part for the sub-area plans, so it might be of interest to all of us to hear his presentation. It was a short 25-minute slide presentation and commentary, I thought was just really well-done, so I think a lot of folks got a lot out of that. With regard to the rest of the week, been a busy week. We've got, what else is going on here? I have multiple comments written down. That was predominantly the nature of my attendance at things this last week. I did want to make sure one of us is at PRCRC this week. Are you going to be there, or are you out? You are there. Okay. I will try to be there, unless you stand by. My oldest daughter's coming home from the airport that night, so I may need to pick her up, so I'll see where Gail is with regard to that, but one of us should go, Mr. Simpson, I'll double-check with you on that. Yeah, 6 o'clock, shouldn't last too long. Just had a couple of questions with regard to some of the information we all received tonight. You know, on the Sound Transit right-of-way thing, I'm kind of surprised that that is still an ongoing effort at some resolution of Sound Transit. Do you know, Mr. Coffield, where Rogoff and his team is with regard to the 25-foot right-of-way needed? I mean, if they don't know, you probably don't have any better information, but it seems to me it might be worth reaching out to Chelsea or...
I have, and the response is, we're waiting on the compatibility report, and WashDOT has completed it. So now it's been submitted to Sound Transit, and so then Sound Transit will
Just takes their process.
Will review the compatibility report to see if it meets their standards, and then if it does, at that point, then they will negotiate with WashDOT for the right-of-way.
Death by process, but I guess that's the way it goes.
Also, if I could just say something as well, the negotiations that occur between Sound Transit and WashDOT are not just limited to this particular stretch of roadway, and so when they sit down and do these, it's within the whole
Got it.
It's within the whole corporate boundary, quite frankly, of Sound Transit, so don't think that it's just our project, it's much greater, it's much greater than that.
The other question I had, the gentleman who came up and spoke from Cascade Affordable Housing Consultants, I know we chatted a little bit about the application coming in, so what has been the formal process, if any, on that? Because I don't recall it coming to us, but it was a, for the multifamily tax credit?
I did not understand.
Yeah. It's in the Tax Incentive Urban Use Center, but not the RTA?
That's correct. If you recall, a couple of weeks ago, I sent you his letter.
Yep.
And I said, "Council, if you want to put it on agenda, let us know."
Okay.
And at this point in time, I have not heard from Council if you want to do that. And what I have heard from the Council is, particularly as it relates to the Springbrook neighborhood, is you wanted the multifamily tax exemption area to be limited to what you call the butterfly area along Bridgeport, along Bridgeport Drive. But again, it's, if you wish to expand it to other areas of Springbrook, you certainly can. I will tell you that there's probably another apartment complex development off of Boston Avenue that would want the same thing. But again, your policy discussion from a couple of years ago, you were clear that you wanted, you wanted in the RTA, I'm sorry, you wanted in that butterfly area, and the reason for that as well was because the area that you want to see that type of development occur, which is, you know, medium to high density, is in the area across the street adjacent to the Transit Center, as well as in the central business district area. But again, it's your policy decision if you wish to provide that. So with that, I'll just wait on Council.
I just didn't have enough information to know one way or the other what he was talking about.
We even enacted the rental housing safety program to do, and it will achieve a lot of rehabilitation of a lot of already affordable housing in a way to do that. So while, you know, it would be Springbrook is not an area that we necessarily need to build density in. Springbrook is pretty dense right now, you know. You know, we're kind of focused particularly on the central business district and the area around the Transit Center, Kendrick, and that area as to where, you know, if we're going to see growth, that's where we would want to look for it. So I'm not inclined to bring back to, I mean, we either have an RTA that we've established so that we can sort of direct where there are things we'd like to see something new built, okay? And that's why the butterfly fit that definition. But if we just respond to everyone who wants to build something anywhere and say, "Okay, well, we'll add that to the RTA," then we're not the policymakers. It's somebody else that's making a policy and who is driving the vision for the community.
I'm more concerned about correspondence that goes out formally saying it is in the RTA.
Well, that's unfortunate.
And we corrected that at some point?
But it's
Well, it's unfortunate, it just makes us look a little foolish. But did we correct that letter that Andrea sent out in 2017?
I have to look into that, Deputy Mayor.
Okay. Because that, I mean, that's the problem, is if
And I talked to him on the phone myself.
Well, I get it.
And it is a year ago.
Yeah, I know, and that's why people can, there's this thing called reasonable reliance, so we have to be kind of careful about the communications if not corrected. That's my concern. Yeah. So I get where you're coming from in the policy standpoint, I just think we've got to be careful tripping over ourselves, saying one thing and doing another.
I want to second, if I may, the Councilmember Branstadter's remarks, but I would also note that all of a sudden, we have interest in that neighborhood, right? And so on one side of the creek, we've got the big development, the apartment going, and they're working away. Across the street from this one is now zoned industrial. So I don't, if these guys built across a little street, the industrial guys may not want to come in. You know, and I don't know that they, and I don't know that these guys realize that it's zoned industrial, and then right up the street going to the north on 47th, the kidney dialysis clinic's going in. So we got a problem from the standpoint, we don't know what we want in there, and we haven't really, as a city, really looked at that area, and actually, the development is getting in front of us on that, because we've got industrial, we've got medical office, and this thing is zoned properly, it's just in a floodplain, and I would, you know, that's problematical.
TOC zone, according to the June 2017 letter, unless that's incorrect, too.
It was rezoned after that.
Was it? What is it zoned currently?
Light industrial manufacturing.
The whole block, huh?
To the east of 47th. The Pierce County, Pierce County currently owns.
Okay. So the parcels these guys bought and are looking at is light industrial now?
No.
No.
It's multifamily.
This property is commercial.
That's what I was addressing, I'm sorry.
I thought you were talking about the property.
No, or whatever. This property is zoned, so I mean, we have addressed that, if we've zoned that property and the guy's buying it under the applicable zoning.
I think, I think we made a serious error, and when we zoned it, when we accepted the flood map that we were forced to accept, we didn't immediately order staff to come back with a zoning that would be compatible with the floodplain. Okay. So he can build there. It's, the question is, are we going to encourage it with a very large subsidy?
That is the policy issue, get it. Okay. Other than that, I have no further comments. And the question back to the city manager, do we have need tonight for an executive session of some limited amount?
10-minute executive session to discuss pending litigation, which public discussion would potentially jeopardize.
Very good, so we will recess into executive session for approximately 10 minutes to discuss pending litigation. No action will be taken. We will recess at this time, and we will come back after the executive session and then adjourn.